Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. We call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to subdivide the remaining land of A.D. Makepeace and Assessors Map 36, Lot 2, located at Zero High Street in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Good evening. If you could just identify yourself and if you have a -- yeah, sign in if you have a moment.
My name is Ken Conti. I'm with Beals &amp; Thomas here tonight, representing on behalf of A.D. Makepeace.
Great. What are we separating, Lot Parcel A from Lot 1 or, I'm not sure entirely? It's a very big map.
Yes, it is. It's a large piece of property as well. We were before the Board earlier in the year, creating the Lot 1, which is to the west of this property. At such time, Lot 1 was created and the remaining land of was designated on a previous plan, approximately 400 acres or so. What we're doing tonight is we're taking that remaining land of Makepeace and separating out a 224-acre property that's not to be considered a building lot. While it does not have adequate frontage, it does have two access points, two small access points, one off of High Street and another one off of Plymouth Road. Again, it's just property that Makepeace is subdividing as part of their land management purposes. And it is not to be considered a building lot.
Now, is Parcel A being separated from Lot 1 or the remaining land of A.D. Makepeace?
The remaining land of A.D. Makepeace.
Okay.
Yeah, Lot 1 was created, like I said, earlier this year by another A&R plan.
Right, I recall. Was an A&amp;OI done? I don't see the...
No, no A&amp;OI. The wetlands shown are just taken from Mass GIS. And again, the entire property, just quite a bit of it is swamp.
It's not a particularly big issue if it's not a building lot, but it is part of the application process. All right. Any questions from the Board? Concerns or comments?
I don't have any.
No. All right, then the Chair will accept a motion to... Pardon?
Endorse. Sometimes people say approve, but I just wanted to throw endorse in there as the operative term for your motion.
Indoors?
To endorse an A&R.
Oh, I thought -- I'm getting -- I thought you said indoors, so I'm getting old. I'm sorry, Mr. Bott. Motion to endorse the A&R plan of A.D. Makepeace Assessors Map 36, Lot 2, as Parcel A not to be considered a building lot.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
And I will second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further questions, comments, or concerns of the Board? Seeing none, that would be you, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is a re-division of Lot 2 and Parcel A owned by Paul Foley, Assessors Map 96101 and 96102, located at Zero Rochester Road in the Residential Agricultural There was a site rock.
I'm here also on behalf of the owners of Foley Farm on this A&R plan.
All right. And we have 12 feet outside the guardrail for each side of the proposed driveway?
Yeah, we -- so as a result of the last meeting, we went out and did some additional surveying out at the frontage and to better define the limit of the pavement opening there, as well as the distance to the guardrail. And we've provided, I think, a sketch supplementary to the A&R plan.
Yes.
Indicating some of the measurements and our creation of an easement to provide access to the both lots. This is about -- the easement will provide about approximately 22 feet of available area for access.
It's supposed to be 12 feet each. It should be 24 if there's to be either two-directional traffic. Because I see it's at an angle, correct?
Yes.
Because when we walked it, we were measuring inside the guardrail to the other side of the gravel road.
Mm-hmm. I know that the easement was created, as you can see, is somewhat off of the guardrail. I would suspect that, you know, as the easement gets onto the property, it does widen a bit. So I would assume that, you know, you have more than adequate width there to maintain the 24 feet. It's a 30-foot wide easement right now, so, you know, there's adequate area there for the width that you're seeking. We're not proposing any work at this time and I...
Right. No, I see. I was just, I'm curious as to why the 22.2-foot measurement is particularly there.
So we did contact the fire department and had some informal discussions with them. And they had provided us with an earlier plan that had a common driveway. And they had indicated that 22-feet width was what they would be satisfied with.
Right. We require 12 feet on each side of the road for two-way traffic. I will mention that my concern is about the safety of the driving off the road into the culvert. But that has nothing to do with the A&R plan. But I do want to mention that that is a concern. All right. I also noticed that this, these properties are part of the Mass Historic Commission inventory and the Weewantik River core habitat, critical natural landscape. And those should be identified somewhere on this. Other than that, does the Board have any questions or concerns? All right. And do we have on here, Mr. Bott, the disclaimer?
Well, Parcel 1A is not to be considered a buildable lot, but Lots 2 and Lot 3 are the two properties that they are looking to create as buildable lots. There's access to the site, and essentially, that is the only standard for an A&R plan. Can you access the site from the frontage?
Right. I was looking for the disclaimer. The endorsement of the Planning Board should not be construed as a...
Yes, right under the box.
I did find it, yeah.
And that's pretty standard on just about everyone who sees these things.
All right. The Chair will accept a motion. Oh, last question. Was an A&amp;OI done on this property?
Yes.
Then how come...
I believe it's mentioned in the notes.
Right, it should...
Note 5.
It should be identified on the map.
It is note 5.
Right, the 65-foot, 100 and 200-foot should be noted on the map, though. But the Chair will accept a motion to endorse the A&R for the re-division of Lot 2 and Parcel A owned by Paul Foley Assessors Map 96101, 96102, that Mass Historical Commission inventory should be identified on the plan, as well as Weewantik River core habitat, critical natural landscape should also be identified somewhere on this plan.
What's your motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do we have any further discussion in regards to this? Seeing none, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
All right. And if I could, just give me those two...
Oh, it's the Massachusetts Historic Commission inventory and the Weewantik River core habitat dash critical natural landscape.
So we need to revise the plans with those notes and then you'll sign them?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Our next order of business this evening is a request by ENS Holdings LLC.
Yes.
For a minor modification to site plan, One Ricketts Pond Drive, Assessors Map 32, Lot 1-1, in the Spring Street Innovation District.
Good evening. Don Egan for ENS Holdings.
Good evening. Could you give us a little narrative?
Yes. So Building 1 is part of Phase 1. Building 2 and 3 are down the road. And after reviewing the plan, and we're getting pretty close on finishing up here, getting ready to pave, realized there's only five spots for parking for Phase 1. So I am requesting 14 additional spots. The concern is safety of controlling the parking for that building and not having people park randomly around.
Right.
Could pose a hazard.
And my concern is that you're looking to pave over what is supposed to be, which we approved as a landscape buffer for the side of the building there.
So if the landscaping is an issue, I do have some photos, aerial photos and such, if you're interested in seeing it. There is currently no landscaping proposed along Spring Street.
Right, which is why we required it at this particular spot because of the infiltration basin is otherwise between Spring Street and the building. We also gave a waiver for parking in front of the building.
Okay.
And it's far, far more than eight spaces that we allowed in front of the buildings on this lot.
Well, Phase 1, Building 1 is going first. And so that was the concern because there is no timeframe for Building 2 and 3. So currently, there'll be five spaces. What I can propose is moving the landscaping out along Spring Street, which is really, if you drive by there, and I do have pictures, it's quite an eyesore. And I think if we're interested in the view of Carver, I would propose moving the landscaping out there and not to have to look at the eyesore of the retention pond. And I do have photos, if you're interested in seeing. I'm a big concern about the aesthetics of Carver because I live, I bought a house 30 years ago here, and I live in town. So if you have seen the building or been by there, which I also have pictures, it's not a vanilla building. It's aesthetically, it's a lot different than maybe a lot of the other metal buildings that you'd seen in the area. I could show you some aerial views if you would want to consider it.
Well, I'd like to see a proposed revised landscaping for along the Spring Street side.
Would you consider then moving what is proposed out along that, the same amount of bushes, or I could even add more?
Well, the length of Spring Street is longer considerably. So, I mean, it wouldn't...
That's why I'm thinking what is proposed isn't really doing much for the aesthetics, I don't think, for the people that live along that area, driving past.
Well, part of it was to hide the parking, but now you're going to put parking there.
I could still propose moving some bushes. There is still some room there.
I don't have an issue with the parking out back.
Okay.
But if you want a minor modification, put these other parking spaces in. I think I personally would like to see a revised landscaping for along the Spring Street that would otherwise...
Okay, if that would be a consideration, I can do that. Like I said, right now, SLT doesn't own that. Nobody owns that. And it looks horrible driving down there right now.
That's not part of the lot?
That is part of my lot, and nobody ever proposed it. And now, being there, I'm thinking, if it was me, that was a neighbor butting it, I would rather see it blocking that retention pond.
Well, I would agree with you. So...
So, question?
Yes, please.
So, right now, in the landscaping plan, which is LA 1, there's landscaping proposed to screen the additional parking. So I guess the question that we're, the discussion we're having is talking about moving that landscaping and not the original landscaping for the development out to Spring Street?
I would propose either one that you'd be willing to accept because personally, like I said, this is what this looks like right now. And that's how it is proposed to stay.
No, I...
And it's, to me, it's...
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. I did drive by there tonight.
I know. I feel like looking, and I'm concerned about the hazard because I have carried the secondary road for the fire department to come through.
Right.
And it is, I mean, we're there, but if we're renting out a space, you know, not being there 100% of the time, if people show up, they're going to be parking along that side. And so I thought that this would be better for the town.
And I would agree. If you come up, if you present a proposed landscaping plan for Long Spring Street, I wouldn't really have any particular issues with adding a little extra parking.
Is there, because we're at the time they're going to shut down the asphalt plants, I either have to...
Is it what?
They're going to shut down the asphalt plant soon, so that's why their SLT is ready, prepared to pave next week.
To be fair, we worked very hard on the landscaping plan with the original proposal in regards to this and making sure it was adequate in regards to meeting the zoning bylaws because we did give a lot of waivers for the landscaping in requirement, in requirements in regards to this particular project. So part of our issue is that people shouldn't be seeing any parking spaces or anything. If you want to come up with something, I'm sure we'd be glad to review it.
Do you have a suggestion or something that we could do this evening? I could see what is there behind the parking, move that out to Spring Street. I could multiply by two and go along the road, just so we can move this along. And I will get the plan to the town and sign off if I show that, just so we could proceed.
Do you want to take a couple minutes to mark up one of the plans with a proposed landscaping plan?
Okay. I mean...
If I may?
Please.
So regarding SLT paving this week?
It's next week.
Yeah, unlikely. Because in increasing the impervious surface, we've got the drainage calculations that we all sent our consulting engineer.
Right.
So we're really going to have an answer until Andy looks at that and says, "Yeah, this is fine. The additional pavement and the drainage is fine."
Okay.
I'm anticipating bringing this back on 11/28 with Andy here to say, "Here's what's up with the plan. We've got a couple things on the 28th that's not just your plan." But so until, you know, Fussin' O'Neill gets a chance to look into the drainage counts that they got Thursday, Friday?
Thursday, I think. Actually, it was Wednesday evening I brought it in.
So plus or minus a national holiday.
When did that go over to Andy?
Probably when it came in.
Okay.
So, you know, we don't have an answer as to whether all that stuff's fine. And likely, it is. Engineers designed the plan, and engineer's going to check it. But until we've got an opportunity for Andy to give us a review memo that says the additional paving works, the drainage that's associated with that paving works, you can't pave.
Yeah, I know that it does work because that's why I had McKenzie do it. So obviously, they would have told me at that point, it's not. So I'm sure they'll review it and it'll be fine. The issue is, is then if we miss the opportunity to pave, then that's what Spring Street looks like. And I just think for the town, it's just...
I just don't see a way for the Board to say, "It's okay," without...
And it has to wait till the 28th? They can't be on for next Tuesday?
The next meeting is the 28th.
It is? That's next week already?
No, that meet, Board meets every two weeks.
Oh, every two weeks? Okay, I was thinking you meant every week.
So 11/28.
Okay.
The next meeting. So I've asked Andy, can we look at this for the 28th in addition to another development he's looking at?
Okay. Okay.
Do you have a date for when they're not paving anymore?
No, they usually shut them down before Thanksgiving, so that's the issue. That's typically the time. I don't have an exact date, to be honest with you. I just...
It's weather-dependent.
It can be, but yeah.
And sometimes they just say, "We're going to give everybody a holiday," but firing you all now.
But once I pave, it's too tough, like when they grade that out to add it after to try and say. So I guess I'll have to consider them that. It just, I think for the town, it's...
I would tend to agree with you, but there is a large amount of impervious surface and therefore the drainage calculations and...
Which they were done and they were received last Wednesday by them. Yeah. And I did check today to see if they had come back, to see if there was any comments from Andy, but nothing.
They're not, which is why I ask him, can we get this queued up for the 28th?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'll have to see what the plants are doing. I just, I don't want to miss paving the parking till next year. That's obviously it, I know.
I understand, but I, there's not much we can do until our engineer goes over the plans.
So it's the engineer confirming the impervious surface and the drainage counts? If he says yes, then you're looking for a landscape. It's just to get that all done and McKenzie to do it. Is he going to need to see that also, or is that going to be something? I don't want to come on the 28th.
I believe, yes. Well, he also reviewed the prior landscaping plan, so he would want to review the proposed one.
So do a proposed?
I would include it.
Okay, for Spring Street?
Yeah.
Do I need to fill out another minor mod for that?
No, just give me a revised landscape plan.
No.
Okay.
Take this sheet LA 1.
Right, correct.
And revise it with the landscaping where, at Spring Street.
Okay. Can I add these in addition to what I submitted today?
Please.
Okay.
Absolutely.
This is current Spring Street, and then you go out of the building and...
It's your multiple copies of...
Yes, there's eight, and then that will be...
All right, so the Board will continue this to November 28th of 2023.
Is this the big white building? Is you going on the left?
I think it's just missing on that back page.
I think it would be a vast improvement, just...
I do, too. I really just think, and I think you're going to find that the calculations and everything are fine. I'm more than happy to do some nice landscaping out there. I think it's, as of right now, it looks terrible to me. I wouldn't want to drive up to that every day.
Yeah.
And I think it would still block all the parking, having it along the street. You won't see it. Plus, there's a big berm there, as you can tell, so I think it's going to block it more to do so.
Yes, so the berm was part of the requirement due to the lack of landscaping out there, and that's why we moved it back. So if you want to move it to the front, I personally am all for that.
I think it's a better deal. I think it looks better. And honestly, I think the building looks nice and decent. There's going to be large black garage doors. There are two roads of full-view glass. You know, I think we did a nice job on the building, and I hate to see everybody looking at a bunch of weeds along Spring Street. And I also, I really just want to stress, I also think it's a safety hazard for people where they're going to be parking while the other two buildings are going up, so.
Thank you. You have a good evening. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map 67, Lots 4-3 and 4-F in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The proposed scope includes construction of six new triplex residential townhouses consisting of 18 total units. We have a request from the applicant to continue the hearing to January 9th, 2024. The Chair will accept the motion to continue said public hearing.
Make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is public hearing notice on the application of Nada Muad Litters Paw requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 58 North Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map 16-15-1 for a dog daycare boarding pet accessories retail store in a general business district. Now, this is continued, a continued hearing.
If I may make my public service announcement at this point. So for the applicant, we are... So as I was saying to the applicant, so we are one Planning Board member short tonight. So this requires a four-fifth vote. It's a special permit. There are five members of the Planning Board who can vote on this because we have an associate member. But going forward, if this continues, you know, again, one member won't be able to vote. So I just always like to let people know that you're losing a potential vote out of the four that you need. There's five people who vote on it. So there's a... It's a word that starts with an S.
If we continue the hearing tonight, it'll have to be a unanimous vote.
Well, no, four out of these five.
Pardon?
Four out of these five. But Gasky can vote on it.
And neither can Mr. Robinson, as he wasn't...
Did you miss?
He was...
Okay. I didn't have that in mind.
It would have to be a unanimous vote, so...
So at this point, thank you. So with Kevin ineligible to vote, four out of four have to vote for this. If you continue it for two weeks, assuming we're going to have full participation on the 28th, then you'll have five people who are eligible to vote on it. But right now, you have to have four for four to get your permit approved. So the option's up to you. If you want to continue and discuss it tonight, you got to have 100% of the votes. If you continue it, maybe you got to have 80% of the votes. If you continue it, maybe you gotta have 80% of the votes when we got five eligible members.
Do you want to take a moment to discuss it out in the hallway? Yeah.
Thank you.
And while they're at that, you did see in your packet the list of conditions from previous doggy daycare that I included, because that was one of the conversations we had previous.
Now, Kevin, you can't vote, you missed the viewing or you missed the meeting here?
The meeting, I wasn't here for the meeting.
We don't, sightworks, we don't do it as a, a public meeting. Some boards do.
I didn't, I know we missed the viewing, but I didn't know we missed it last time.
Yes, that was Mrs. Robinson's birthday?
Yes.
And things go splendidly well?
Very well.
All right. You hit every stop.
The lobsters were crisp.
Yeah? Crisp?
Crisp, yes, they can't be too soft, they have to be crisp and snap. So I did just right, nine and a half minutes.
Is that the number?
And I'll tell you, I can't, I, I would never want to cook her lobsters wrong.
I know the feeling.
And I'm kind, I bring the water to a boil when I drop them in.
Yeah, true.
My neighbor Stan the Lobster Man says, you, you fill the pan with water, saltwater up to your knuckle.
That's it.
And get it boiling, drop them in, 12 to 15.
Yeah, I actually have a, a little steamer that's about that big and I fill the water so that it goes that much over it, so that would be about a knuckle. Just about right.
Didn't you brought some in for us to try?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I should have.
My birthday's in April.
Excellent, it's good to, to know I don't know that.
Well, we'd like to go forward and at least, you know, discuss whether you have any other concerns. We know you had the, your site visit. We adjusted the layout in the building, which I, I thought was a larger scale plan. And we did some...
So just to make sure, you're fine going forward with four voting members?
Right.
And I'm not one of them, you know that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we think we addressed your concerns on the, some of the landscaping needs. We did some proposed landscaping in the front, which is consistent with what was originally approved on this site several years ago. There was a raised landscape bed around the side with some rhododendrons.
Rhododendrons, you say?
Yes. And a couple of other things, and then we added four additional dogwood trees for some color. In amongst the, there's four existing oak trees there now.
Now, part of the issue would be that all, the oak trees and the dog trees are deciduous and will lose their leaves during the winter? If you would replace one on each end with some type of evergreen to, to block the...
Yes, please. So, well, as we get near roadways and driveways, deciduous are what we want. So there's not a shading issue creating places where things can ice up. So that's why a typical street tree is usually deciduous. So it's not creating shading issues that could create the freezing issues at some point in the future. So I would not lean into a, a, a coniferous tree or an evergreen near those areas because you just don't want that sort of shading effect.
Well, not near the street, it looks to be, oh, you got 20, 20 feet there?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if I could, in the, in the raised bed, beds, there are proposed evergreens in those areas, so...
You, you mentioned the rhododendrons, correct, yeah?
Yeah.
All right. There should be a boarding area for every dog that you plan to keep overnight. And I do have concerns that there, were you asking for 70?
60.
60?
But not 60 for a boarding.
No, right. Overnight was 20?
19, 20, yeah.
Okay.
19, yeah.
But I suppose you could use an indoor playroom as a boarding area, would be fine for that. Now, dogs during the day, how many boarding areas do you have, 18?
19.
19? Now, if, are, are the dogs planning on just being in the indoor playrooms all, all day as a group, or?
What, is boarding here, boarding here, and boarding here separated from the playrooms?
Forty?
The boarding areas are separate from the indoor playrooms.
Right, right, I see that. How, how many kennels?
19.
Right. And, and yes, they're, they're separated. That's what I'm wondering is, during the daytime, are the dogs just gathered in groups in the playrooms, or?
There will be like three playroom.
Yeah.
And then the dog will be like in different group, depending on size.
And, and if there's an issue, you're gonna have to separate them and put them in boarding areas, correct? If, if one dog's a problem, and there's problems.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to separate them and you should have sufficient boarding rooms, boarding areas for all the dogs. But I, I know the size of the property is, is big. I would think that you would need one for everyone at night and at least half for the amount of dogs that you want during the day. So if you want 60 dogs, I would, considering the site, and I'm, I'm considering the, the size of this place, if you want 60 dogs, there should be roughly 30, 30 kennels.
We have room to do it because it, there's actually just four play areas inside. We could take and put additional kennels in one of those play areas, so there could be enough.
Okay. Um, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm all right with it, other than that, you should... I think you might think about putting a couple in each of the playrooms, but that's, that's your decision. But it's just, dogs are still animals and they, like people, they don't all get along with each other. And that, that can cause problems.
Yes.
And safety issues. Mr. Bott, did they receive a copy of the fire department recommendations?
It came in today, I do not know if they have. But we'll make sure they have one before they leave.
I did receive those by email from Jesse.
All right, so you did get Jesse's memo?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they, they seem like fine, fine conditions that we're gonna have to do anyways.
And these are, this is some information the board had asked previously about staffing levels. The last time we did one of these, just up the street at 72 North Main. So I provided them a, a list of those conditions that we put on the last doggy daycare just up the street, and that was in 2022, so it's fairly recent. One thing that I noticed in reviewing that file was they also had some additional treatment for the fence. Rather than just a standard chain link fence in the back, they had some screening on the fences for when the dogs go out. They wanted to make sure that they didn't create any noise for the, of budding neighbors. Now, in that spot, the neighbors behind the property were residential. Here, you're sort of in a little bit of a bowl, but I just wanted to add that information that we had done previously to show that some additional screening for the fences just to keep noise and maybe perhaps irritation for the dogs down.
Maybe a vinyl, vinyl, uh, the vinyl?
Vinyl, vinyl, vinyl inserts? Yes, that, that can be done. Actually, the, the bulk of the property behind us across the street is the cemetery, so I don't think we'll be disturbing anybody there.
Yeah, and if they get out, they certainly don't want to dig anything up over there.
Well, they're always dying to get anything.
So many, so many opportunities for cemetery gifts. So, but the, 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 the plan presently says a proposed chain link fence, and I didn't know if there was anything, any sort of treatment to that fence, whether there's...
We can put some vinyl inserts in it to...
Yes.
Cut the noise down. That's certainly a condition we can deal with.
They do, you do have one, I know that you do have one neighbor right across the street. But for the most part, I don't think that there's many more.
Is that Michael, the installation company?
Yeah, so there's one person, McMahon. I would just be interested in whether they needed that from you. But it's probably a good thing for you to have some type, type of noise retention, you know? Because then you don't want to get complaints about the dogs barking.
Cool. And I'll say that I'm not aware of any complaints from the previous...
Right.
Place that we permitted. So with that in mind, look at recreating the success of not having complaints, as suggested.
What are your proposed operating hours?
6:00 AM and 5:00 AM for regular...
I'm sorry, did you say 5:00 AM?
6:00 AM, 7:00 AM for receiving dog, like, and 5:00 AM for, for families to pick up the dogs, except for the people that are boarded, uh, as dogs, like, leaving it overnight.
Did you mean 5:00 PM, Joe?
BM, yes.
Sunday hours?
You said AM.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure, you meant 5:00 PM for pickup?
Ah, 5:00 PM for pickup.
Yeah.
Would you want to be there for 5:00 AM?
17 hours.
I'm from Florida.
You don't recall the proposed hours for the, the prior business, do you? I, I know it was residential and...
For, we were talking about the prior business here or up the street?
The one up the street.
I think the hours are in that memo that I gave you.
I, I thought we limited it because of the residences to 7 to 7 and then 9 to 5.
I took those out of the decision, so those were the hours.
All right.
So just so I'm clear, I didn't catch the gentleman's name in the bag?
My name's Yusuf.
Yusuf. 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM to receive animals and 5:00 PM to pick them up?
Yeah.
Absent the dogs who might be boarded, who are obviously staying later.
That's for daily, like, pickup on the dog.
So if you, if you would, just come up to the microphone and introduce yourself because you're, you're speaking about this, our note taker needs to hear.
My name is Yusuf Maual, I'm a co-owner.
Have yourself a home.
My name is Yusuf Maual, I'm co-owner of the building.
All right, um, if we approved it for the other one, I, I don't see why we wouldn't approve it here. Outdoor activities for group sessions run from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, same, same as the other place. And I, I expect the overnight dogs will have to be walked and everything, but they shouldn't be outrunning as, as a group, so. And I believe it's 12 dogs to each staff member?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out.
I have a question, guys. If you're housing the dogs overnight, are, are you planning on having staff there overnight or security? You know, like, security cameras?
Uh, no, we're definitely gonna have some...
You're gonna have staff overnight?
Yeah.
All right, so you saw the fire department's reviews on that as far as overnight staff?
Um, not yet. I'm not sure, no.
Okay, you haven't shown that to them? Okay, all right. I just want you guys to be aware of everything that you need to know.
Yeah.
You know, so you don't come into this blindly. Unfortunately, I wasn't here when you came before us. There's no way I was gonna miss Lisa's birthday.
Thank you. Who's birthday?
Thank you. Yes.
Who's birthday?
Lisa's.
Oh, Lisa, oh my God, you're gonna be in big trouble.
That's right.
That's right.
So, um, any, any further questions or comments?
No, I was just concerned that they know what's gonna go on if they have to staff it at night.
Oh, yeah, right.
Do the trainers need to be trained themselves? I mean, do they have to have a background? How do you find people to take care of these dogs?
So actually, actually, like, a good friend of mine, he own a big business in Eastern Mass.
Okay.
And he's gonna do some training, like, for us, like, for, for new people. And he's been involved, not in the people, but as a good friend, I've been knowing him for over 20 years. So he gonna do a lot of training and stuff. And he's doing very good in Eastern, big facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, more than 10.
So that's where the idea came from?
Yes, oh, yeah. Come, come back to the food business.
You guys are about a year late, though, another place running just down the street.
A year late?
You know, there's another place right down the street, right? Yeah, you guys are, you're only a year late.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it's, it's an up and coming thing.
It's, it's been there, but we've been having like, you know, ups and downs and, you know...
It's a lot of pride for making pizza and grinders.
Well, you, and, and you have the property.
Take it easy a little bit, you know what I mean? Like, we're not getting any younger.
Excellent.
Yes.
And the dogs don't complain about the food?
I owned like two dogs.
Either our customer too.
Love dogs myself, I, we owned like a German Shepherd and a Black Labrador, amazing dogs. I had my Black Lab for over 12 years.
Yes.
Yes, great dogs, so we definitely loving the business.
And people are spending more money on taking care of their dogs in daycare than they are their children.
It's like a member of the family, you know?
Yeah.
So, so what is the business hour we allow for again?
I believe it was Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Yeah. That's perfect.
Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Yep, sounds great.
Maximum number of dogs? 30 dogs at a time are permitted outside with 15 going in and 15 going out. Outdoor activities for the groups of dogs are gonna be limited from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Of course, overnight, the dogs are gonna have to go out and be walked and everything, but, you know, which is fine. And they could be, it doesn't have to be on an individual basis, as long as they're not outrunning as groups. Overnight boarding, you said, 19 or 20 dogs, so 20 dogs. There has to be a kennel for each one. And there has to be at least 50% kennels for the dogs that are there during the day. So if we approve 60, 60 dogs during the day, then there should be 30 kennels in the building. And, and that's for safety issues for your employees, yourselves, and... I would take a, a motion, but I, I would like Mr. Bott to cover the conditions prior to the motion.
So, conditions that have been previously imposed, that would be the recommendation for this to be consistent. And since they are so close in proximity, both in time and location, was that... location, was that a maximum of 60 dogs, 30 kennels during the day, a kennel for each dog overnight. The copy of the recorded decision will be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. The applicant will comply with the rules of Section 61A, Rules and Regulations for the Control of Dogs, that is in the town's general bylaws as amended. The business may operate the daycare Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we said in this instance?
What, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Okay.
Monday to Friday.
Thank you. Saturday and Sunday, 8 to 5, depending on the client's needs, is noted in staffing and outdoor use restrictions. The maximum number of customer dogs, including daycare and boarding dogs, shall be 60?
It says 75.
Well, that's from the previous
Yep.
Because it's staffed, so six, they're asked for 60 dogs, requiring a staffing level of one staff per 12 dogs. So just so we understand, in order to have 60 dogs, there needs to be five people on staff
Sounds great.
Every day. There have been instances where, particularly during COVID, where someone couldn't make it in because of, you know, illness, and basically other operations set and say, your dogs can't come in. So you have to be able to disappoint people by taking such good care of their dogs to say, we don't have enough staff to take care of your dog.
Yes.
So staffing level of one staff per 12 dogs. Applicants should provide contact information to the animal control offices for any complaints about nuisance sparking. Dog waste will be picked up daily onsite and removed from the property at least once a week. The applicant shall adhere to the requirements outlined in the Carver Fire Department letter dated November 14th, 2023, which includes that the structure has been vacant for several years and will require a thorough evaluation of all building, safety systems prior to occupancy, including firing alarms, fire extinguishers, means of egress, and emergency lighting. The existing commercial kitchen will have to be maintained or decommissioned in accordance with the fire code. If the building will be equipped with sleeping provisions for overnight staff, consultation and approval by the building commissioner official is required. Animal housing facilities, the Massachusetts Fire Code MA 527 CMR-1 refers to NFPA, the National Fire Prevention Code, 150 standard for fire and life safety in animal housing facilities, for guidance on this type of occupancy. A written procedure for disaster and emergency management is one of the requirements and shall be approved by the fire department prior to occupancy. All dogs must be properly licensed by their home community, and such information shall be available to the animal control officer upon request. Vaccination records for all dogs shall be submitted to the operator prior to the dogs being accepted at the facility. Such records shall be made available to the animal control officer. The facility will inspect it annually by the Carver Animal Control Officer.
And a maximum of 30 dogs are, at a time, are permitted outside with 15 going in and 15 going out. I, I think that covers.
Oh, and outdoor activities are limited to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Group activities, we should, I mean, dog's got to go when dog's got to go, but 15 dogs outside at 10 o'clock at night might be more than the neighbors can handle.
So group outdoor activities?
Yes, because, you know, if they have overnight boarding, they're going to have to go out, so.
I'm with you.
I think that, that covers. What did we decide on the fence? Is, is the fence
Vital slats or something?
Okay, so we want some sort of noise suppression or, okay.
You have to buy the $500 panels.
No, that's just, right, break it up a little bit. All right. Any further questions, concerns, or comments from the board? Seeing none, the chair will accept the motion to approve the application of Nader Mawad Litters Paw.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, sir.
The chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Do we want to ask? We have somebody
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Judy. If you gentlemen would excuse us for a moment? Thank you.
I am sorry I didn't see your hand up.
Thank you for noticing. Judy Richards, 5 Lilian Way. I'm not a direct butter, but I live in the area. I'm very familiar with the building, and I want to thank them to, because they started to clean up the area. It's been an eyesore for years. There still is a pile of rubble. When you look at the building, that if you're a good neighbor, you would have cleaned that up, seeing that you want to come and be a new member of our community. As far as the dogs and the noise, I'm a direct butter of the home pack, and yes, I do hear the dogs. Have I complained? No, I haven't, because I understand that dogs do bark. And the windows are closed, and it's nighttime, you do not hear the dogs. I do feel, though, that as long as they abide by all the rules that have been set forth, the licensing, the dogs being up to date with their shots, and they don't let the staff walk more than two dogs at a time, the home pack does use our neighborhood to take the dogs for walks, which I understand some animals, the owners require their pets to be walked, not just housed all day. And I do have another question, that do they plan on using upstairs as accessory apartments and renting most to other people, or just for staff? Because that will be another issue that if they do rent it out to somebody that doesn't realize there's going to be barking dogs downstairs, that might cause some future issues, not that it's my problem. And there are companies that do pick up dog waste out there. I heard of one today, it's called Ghost Scoopers. It's a company that goes around and picks up these daycares that do house dogs, there's waste, because we've all learned our dog waste has a high bacteria count, so when they do walk their dogs, hopefully they will pick it up and not just throw it in the neighbor's yard that I've had in the past. And are they planning on putting any other business in there? Is this all going to be dog daycare?
There is a, a proposed retail area within here.
Which, then traffic's coming and going, and that's their issue, and it's a, you know, public safety issue, not that it's the, the dog part of it.
I, I will say we were unaware.
Yeah, we didn't know that they were allowing the dogs to be walked in the neighborhood.
Which is quite fine. You know, I, dogs want to be taken out, and there are dog walkers that come to private residence homes
Only concern that is would be insurance purposes.
Well, that's something between the owners and the person that drops the dog off. There should be some type of legal papers that they handle.
The animal control officer should be aware of that.
Well, and does the animal control officer, other than once a year, go in to inspect these places and check the licenses and make sure they're all? I mean, if I had a dog, I guess I would ask those questions if I were to bring him into a daycare. Like, when you bring your children to child daycares, I'm sure there's a lot of conversation in regards to who, what, when, and why, you know, how, you know, when kids are sick, you still bring them in, but there's a sick room, you know?
But, you know.
Again, that's their problem, not me as a resident.
Well, part of the issue
I'm not speaking of the whole board
Right.
But I believe they took the liberty to offer that when they were not given that. Okay.
Yeah, that was not, not only not brought up, but it creates an issue with, if it's a 12 to 1 ratio and somebody's out with four or five dogs walking them.
That's something that they have, you know, unfortunately, it's their issue, because if something happened to their staff member, that's like a workman's comp case, and then you get my dog running loose because something happened when the group of dogs went out.
Well, now will be a great time for us to address this
Yes.
With Joe and Ned, so that they're aware that this is not something that we're probably going to be okay with.
And they, and just part of what I heard, it sounds like he has friends, so they've been probably chatting about this type of business, so that they know what to expect and what happens when you do own a daycare or dog care. I mean, thank you for listening.
No, thank you. All right.
That's really interesting.
That, that was, yes, actually, it's
It bothers me.
Yeah, because the part of virus is
Insurance worries.
All right. Well, gentlemen, rubble in front of your building? As part of the condition, we're going to request that that, that's gone.
What trouble?
There's rubble, material, like, I, I believe there was a sign out there that said free wood for burning, and some people took some, and if you could
90% is gone.
If you could clean that up for safety issues.
But it's more than 95% is gone.
Yeah, I, I, I saw, I figured you'd want, you'd clean it up before, but, but we're going to set it as, as part of our condition.
No problem.
And
Taking the premise, if you require the dogs to stay on premise, you eliminate the walking of
Right, right, the, the other dogs weren't, that was never addressed, that there would be 60 or 70 other dogs walking through the other neighborhoods, because we can't police that to
It's, I mean, it's the street, it's
I, I do know that you own the property next door, so I, I know that's
It's plenty of room for walking within the
Right, but it's, it's not part of this, but it would have to be addressed by the Board of Health in regards to existing public water supply, and if, if that were to take place in that property. And we're going to prohibit overnight residential, other than the staff?
Yeah, there hasn't been any, any requests for any apartments
Right, right, so
But the fire, deputy fire, just deputy fire chief's memo was, if you're going to have people in the building, it clearly needs some
Yes.
Work and some attention by the building commissioner.
So we're going to prohibit residential. You can always come back and ask for it again, but this structure isn't, it's not set up to have residences upstairs, so, I mean, it's okay for offices, sleeping, and things along those lines. If you have the two-member staff or three members overnight, and they're rotating in or out, that's, that's going to have to be dealt with the building commissioner, but uh
I want to mention, there is a, a full room with a bathroom in the first floor. That's what we, we, we thinking about, like, making it for overnight staff.
Okay, all right.
In the first, whereas Arcade used to be, like, there's a, a room with a bathroom, a full bath.
Okay.
Like, we're not planning to use the second floor at all right now.
Okay. So
It's just offices for now.
Yeah, so we're going to prohibit that from residential. You'd need a special permit for that anyways, but
So I have two things that I've added to the conditions. Landscaping installed and site cleared of any existing debris prior to a certificate of occupancy, and no overnight staff in the building until a review and approval by the building commissioner.
Yes, and we're going to prohibit
Did you want to
Apartment rental or in the upstairs?
Dogs, you mean, on the premises?
Yeah, prohibit the dogs from leaving the
Property.
Property.
I would, I would think, yeah, I would think that's in, in the safety of everybody involved.
Yeah, I don't
I don't know if we can do that.
I don't know, I don't think you can prohibit someone from using the public street.
Right, yeah, you can't, right?
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Pick up your poop.
Yeah, pick up your poop.
Have a good T-shirt made.
Yes.
And we, we can't, we can't prohibit you from using your own property to walk the dogs, but you should consult with the health agent in regards to the public water supply that's on that property.
Definitely. But according with the new plan, with the new business, very much like the public water supply right now, where there's existing well.
Yes.
We're not going to be using it anyway, I mean, for, as a public water supply, I mean.
Well, if you have a retail store, it is.
Retail store for selling, like, dogs' stuff, like
Well, you got bathrooms and people, you got grooming areas for other people's commercial properties and things like that, so they would have to decommission it, and that's up to the, the Board of Health to deal with.
Okay.
So currently, it's an existing public water supply.
Yes.
So they can decommission it, I would expect, on you, on your request, but currently, that's what it is.
Sounds good.
All right.
One other
Please.
Potential suggestion here. Just a note, to the extent possible, animals should remain on site.
That's a great way of putting it. Thank you, Mr. Bott.
It covers it, but it doesn't cover it.
My, it's my specialty. I've been a husband for a long time, I've been explaining things about how.
A big part of the issue is, you know, if you're walking four dogs, there's no sidewalks, there's, it's
And now you're stopped.
And blind corners and all of that, so, and, yes, and then you're going to be understaffed and so
Even the, the building next door, it doesn't walk dogs on the streets, you know what I mean?
Right, right. Did we
Less hassle.
Did, did we, um, did we miss anything? Were there any concerns that we might have missed? Yes.
Nope, as long as they have professional waste removal, and they do not use upstairs as an apartment.
Now, we put in daily pickup and weekly removal?
Dog waste will be picked up daily onsite and removed from the property at least once a week.
Okay, excellent. Any further questions or comments from the board? All right. Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by, by Mr. Williams. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none?
Do I get to know?
Yes, sir. Oh, wait, I have to
You have to duly note that he is the alternate.
Yes, okay. I will duly note that our alternate is, is a voting member of the evening.
Do it in absence of one of the men, voting members.
Yes.
Bill Cullum says aye.
I have to abstain.
Oh, yes, you abstain.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Ellen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right, now on to the important part. The chair will accept the motion to approve the application of Nader Mawad Litters Paw, requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 5300 of Carver zoning by law located at 58 North Main Street in Carver for a doggy daycare boarding pet accessories retail store in a general business district with the conditions as previously described.
I will make said motion for that.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Cullum. Excellent, excellent. Do we have any further questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Cullum.
Bill Cullum says aye.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Bill Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Congratulations, we look forward to
Thanks, all.
Good luck.
Have a very nice evening.
You, too.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you, Kevin.
Good to see both of you.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
Smiling faces.
All right. I don't have any topics reasonably anticipated by the chairman. Timeless stones, Mr. Bott, signed timeless stone?
Yeah, so if I may, so we approved timeless stone way back when, and they're ready to build right now, but as it turns out, we don't have a signed copy of their site plan. So they provided us copies of the 3-3 site plan that I have here and confirm they are the plan of record, so I can get the board to sign those site plans. The building commissioner has issued a, a foundation permit to allow them to get started, but he can't go any further without
Excellent.
Copy the plan.
We, that, that was approved.
Yep, so I have those plans, and I have the A&R plan, so if we can endorse those before we leave tonight
We can endorse one, but
Hmm?
Did they, did they modify the other one?
No, no, that, that other one went home with them, they're going to bring it back to us.
All right. We can do that. I don't have any particular notes. Discussion potential topics for town meeting, I received a letter from Ms. Sterns in regards to readdressing the definition of townhouse. Uh, I don't see her here, but, um, again, this is something we'll be taking up again in two weeks, so she's more than welcome to come and address the board if she like.
Yeah, and I saw that email that came in, but hadn't, well, they had a chance to open it up and take a look at it.
Okay. Potential topics for town meeting, uh, I think we need to address the, um, master plans call for two-acre, 200-foot frontage for residential properties. And I would, I would, as it's likely my, I think my term is up next year, um, so I would like to see the planning board be brought up to its previous stipend, uh, for the members before I leave. We will, of course, five members, we will discuss that in regards to a topic for town meeting. The chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 10:10, 2023.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any concerns, questions, or edits? Seeing none, the chair will accept the motion to approve the minutes of 10:10, 23. Bill can't vote on this. You, you were here. Yep. All right, Mr. Robinson?
Am I supposed to say aye? Mr. Robinson says aye. Okay.
Okay, then Ellen Sardillo will say aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Uh, as I understand it, um, before we close out the meeting, the, um, Carver Coyotes Cowboys have made it to the final round and will be playing in the Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So they.
I thought they have a game out in the western part of the state first, and if they win that.
Oh, I thought, I wasn't sure, 'cause I was looking at the schedule, and it looked like they had just won that game the other.
They won the game, I think, they have to win the next game, and at least what I read on the web somewhere.
Right, right, 'cause I.
You know, Western State, they're gonna, the traveling way out someplace.
Well, if you wanna see a, a, a Massachusetts team in a, a Super Bowl, look up a little bit more information on, on the Carver football team.
It won't beat the Patriots.
Yeah.
Well, they could probably beat the Patriots.
All right. So, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
We're gonna have to flip coins now. I will second it.
They'll jump in and do.
No, he can't, yeah.
I couldn't even.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
I tried to get before, but it doesn't work.
I couldn't.
All you, Don.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Williams. All right. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, Area 58, for your time, attention, and help this evening. Judy, uh, we wanna thank you for showing up.